Select Board meeting to order this evening, Tuesday, February 6th at 7:02 PM. A motion to open the meeting?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please. Mr. Gito.
Here.
Mr. McCrisky?
Here.
Vice Chair Cave?
Here.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
And I'm here. I ask all to stand if you are able to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. With that said, I do plan to take item number 11, Consent Agenda Items, which are the approval of open session minutes, meeting of December 19, 2023, December 28, 2023, and January 9, 2024. That's A. B, application for road race or parade, once a night, always a night, memorial 5K. C, useful life certificate for November 23, special town meeting. And D, policy regarding sewer service connections. I plan to move that right after citizens' comments. And I'm asking, if anyone has citizens' comments, please limit your comments to three minutes maximum, because we have a lot on tonight's agenda. With that said, Select Board comments. Mr. Gito.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to thank the town manager for inviting Jay Ash here last Thursday, and thank our chair and vice chair for their efforts to make the evening a success. We heard many important things. In my mind, the most important are have adult conversations focused on the topic and not on the people, and take steps to establish and maintain trust. And I want to highlight the most important thing about that meeting. The town manager demonstrated really what I would call supreme leadership by knowing that the messages the town needed to hear had to come from someone else aside from himself. And yet, the messages needed to be spoken, and they were spoken, and there was discussion on those. And I thank you very much for that. As I said to you in my brief note, that was masterful. I want to report that the town received several generous... Did someone say something? Oh. I want to report that the town received several generous contributions to the beautification fund for plantings this coming May. As of this date, we've received $4,750 because of sizable contributions from Walnut Tree Service on Washington Street, Malpe Tree Company on Old Maple Street, Riley Brothers, Inc. on Tosca Drive, Palio Garden Center on Central Street, Samzghetti on Canton Street, and Dana Barrows Basketball Group on Washington Street. And for any other companies that want to contribute, there's still time to do that. I think it's a good project, and contributing is something to beautify the town isn't a bad idea, I don't believe. I'd like to give a brief shout-out also to a person who seems to do an awful lot in town, and that's Dwight McCarren. He leads walks that are very well-attended over the conservation property. I see him and his group going through different places in town. And, you know, he's showing off the efforts, not only of the Conservation Commission, but of the Recreation Department, the CPC, and a whole lot of other groups in town that have contributed to that effort, including the town meeting members. I'd like to make one other discussion point, and that is that I applaud the state for its immediate actions to dishonorably discharge the leader of the state police unit that unlawfully ran a public safety function in a way that endangers us. Doing the right thing, which I believe the state did at the right time, is very important. But that immediate state action stands in sharp contrast to the state's inaction when this community asked for swift action and when, for decades, other towns and cities have asked for help and none has been given. This contrast must be called out and resolved, and it should start now. Chief McNamara came before the town over 16 months ago, asking the Post Commission to decertify three bad cops to keep them from ever serving as police officers anywhere in the country. To date, Post hasn't done anything. All police officers are put at risk when police chiefs and town managers' hands are tied by civil service procedures that protect the few bad actors. For decades, our governors and legislatures have been told by our civil service... Been told that our civil service system does not serve the people, the towns, or the good police officers. But the messages have basically been ignored. In frustration, towns are asking to get out of civil service. Yet civil service was established a century ago to combat the corruption in police departments, and that protection is still needed. Over a century... Over that century, the state seems to have forgotten that civil service was established to serve the people and the communities, not the police constituencies, and not the lawyers who take advantage of a weak system. Dealing with police issues is very difficult. Let's face it. Many people are a little reluctant to deal with the police departments, and that's a big problem. It's not a new thing. The sheriff of Nottingham wasn't loved either. But police chiefs can't deal with this issue all by themselves. Individual citizens must put themselves and their families at some unease if they address the issue. Leadership at a higher level is required. There are Select Board members and town managers across the state trying to make a change. But they, and hopefully we, need to unite to demand change. I've sent emails to the Mass Municipal Association and to the governor's office addressing this. I'm happy to share my notes and my responses. I'll tell you, they're not encouraging. I believe this is an important topic. It's one that maybe on... Should be on the list of the Globe Spotlight Team. But I'm not hopeful. It's difficult for any business or any group to take action. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to see if you'd be willing to put this on the agenda for this board to begin to see if we can ourselves and perhaps collectively deal with this issue. It's an issue that's nationwide. It's an issue that's very important. It's tearing the country apart, quite frankly, in many ways. So with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Are there any other Select Board comments? Okay. I do. I have two. And one is in reference to the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King event... Well, the two-day event. They were both well-attended. The first was the Indigenous and African-American tour that was right here at our great hall. It was well-attended. I would say there were about 40 people. It was fluid, coming and going. And the tour was led by Dwight McEccron and David Lambert. And they all had... You know, everybody in attendance had great things to say about that. And then the second one was actually on Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King's holiday, and that was January 15, which was at the Stoughton Public Library. And there were about 300 people there, and that was fluid as well. And the focus was on the mental health of our young. We had a panel discussion by some young people, graduates of the town... Of Stoughton High School. And they talked about pursuing your purpose during challenging times. And then we had a fireside chat as well, well-attended. And next time we have an event, please feel free to attend. It's a town-wide event. The second comment is regarding the downtown housing information session that was led by Jay Ash. That was well-attended. And I see Mr. Coulter. Regarding the information session about housing and downtown development, do you have any next steps for us? Economic development as a result of our information session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make the same information public that we talked about at the session. As you know, for the Washington Street Hole in the Ground, we have an article to take that property by eminent domain unless and until the owner either builds the project or sells the project to a reputable builder. That is our recommendation, mine and Mark's recommendation, that that remain on the agenda. We have just recently received the appraisal. It appraised at $700,000. The developer is asking for $1.5 million. As you know, Mark and I have fully disclosed that we've been asking builders to look at that property and encouraging them to speak with the owner for several months. Since the appraisal came in, we're sending that appraisal out to those builders to see if they have any expression of interest. It's in our best interest for a developer to make a deal with the owner and keep the town out of owning that property. So all we can do is make referrals and share information that is already public. At the Housing Forum, Secretary Ash recommended, and we believe this is a good idea, that we should not be trying to build commercial property on the first floor. He concluded after walking the downtown with Mark and myself... We're going to call Scott, Secretary Scott. He concluded that we don't have a parking problem. We walked through four parking lots, of them walking distance, two of them empty, that we have a saturation problem. And to put more commercial properties there would further harm the existing businesses. So Mark and I are going forth before the ZBA and before the planning board, asking that they approve a plan design so that we can put more units there, and also come before the Board of Select... The Select Board to see if they can make that public parking area, which was empty at the time we went through there at 5:00 in the afternoon, if we could sell stickers to sell parking there, overnight parking, to the people who would be in that building. All of those features make this an economic... Make this an economic possibility. So we're going to be coming forth with you... To you before town meeting with a plan that we would propose to any of these developers we're trying to create interest with that would include what they can do by right with the fifth floor, what they can do with parking, and what the town would possibly consider if they put four affordable housing in there. All of those recommendations came from Secretary Ash and were well-received by the audience. And I saw Scott the whole time shaking his head, saying, "It's about time they listened to me." So he was... It's what Scott's been saying, and Steve's been saying for a long time. So it was a great event. You saw it yourself. You participated in it. One last point. He made a really important point, that in town downtown, again, the problem with economic development is not a lack of parking, it's a lack of disposable income. So he is strongly recommending that at the Old State Theater and at the Hole in the Ground, that when housing does develop, that we have a fair amount of those units be market-rate housing. People will have... Who will have disposable income to spend at those downtown businesses. So I hope that's a good executive summary. But we'll... Mark and I will have a plan for the board before town meeting for your approval when we discuss this Hole in the Ground issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. And those events, so that's the tour, the Indigenous and African American tour, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King event, and the Downtown Housing Forum are all on SMAC showing now. So please, please watch, and you would find it very informative. I saw Mr. Carrara had a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Unfortunately, I had to miss that housing downtown. But me and Steve are on a committee that we look at it all the time. And I know he'll probably get tired of hearing me say it, but I'm not a big fan of the partnership, because one steals from the other. And I'm glad that somebody that Tom trusts... Maybe you don't trust me, but he has learned that that's the problem. When you do that, you rob from the other side. It doesn't add any factor to it.
That's right.
But we still... In order, if you want to bring that center back, and our own planner agreed with me, that the parking is... It might not seem like a problem, but it is a problem. If you want to bring that center back to be a business thing, it's got to be strictly parking garage. You can't put apartments above a parking garage and then have businesses below it. Just... What are you going to have? Eight spaces? It just doesn't work. So I'm glad that finally, there's some listening being done. And I'm glad that Tom brought it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scotty. I think that was a compliment.
Sounds like it was a compliment to me. Vice Chair Cave, did you have a comment?
No. I was just going to say that the event itself was excellent. I really appreciate the town manager inviting his friend Jay Ash, who I had only ever seen in pictures. And so I didn't realize he was eight-and-a-half feet tall. But that was a little bit surprising. But there is... You rarely run into a better person. He was kind and thoughtful and was a fabulous listener. You could tell that he was really absorbing the things I was saying, but also, as we met, he was really absorbing the things people were saying and providing helpful insights that were very specific to their concerns and their questions. And his willingness to stay as late as anybody wanted to do follow-ups if necessary. Just thank you for introducing the town to him and for just bringing a really wonderful person over here to help us understand how to make things better. So thank you very much for doing that.
Madam Chair, I want to thank the vice chairman for actually walking the secretary around the downtown, to every store, to every location, to every parking lot. So Jay had a great perspective as he spoke to our residents about downtown. And he had been here five years ago. And Pam McCarthy handed him a copy of his minutes, what he said five years ago. He said it was very intimidating to know what he said five years ago.
Jay will always be a friend of Stoughton. Thank you. If there are no other Select Board comments, we'll go right to item number 11, which is... Which are the Consent Agenda Items. And those items are A, approval of open session minutes, meeting of December 19, December 28, and January 9. B, application for road race or parade, once a night, always a night, memorial 5K, May 11, 2024. Item C is the useful life certificate for November 23... 2023 special town meeting. And item D, policy regarding sewer service connections. Does anyone want to pull any of those items? If not... Mr. Carrara asked to pull item D, policy regarding sewer service connection.
I don't have a problem with the paperwork that was put in. The only problem I have is that, being a street water and sewer commissioner, I am not giving up the rights that I swore an oath to, which is the charter, to not to be informed. I don't want to get something a month later to know what took place. I still want to get the water applications and the sewer applications in my packet. It's nothing against that. It's just I don't want to vote away my rights as a board member to look at this stuff. Because sometimes I see stuff that other people don't see. And I don't want to be told and find out there was a mistake a month later. So if that's not a problem, I'd expect the board to give me some latitude with that. I mean, if you don't want to look at them, you make the choice. But I want to see them.
Yes, there's some language written in the policy that says, "We can still review. We have 30 days." I think the limitation was 30 days. I'm quickly looking at this. So yes.
I think that was if somebody wanted to make a complaint. It didn't say that the board only had 30 days. I want to... If it comes in, I don't want them holding the applications and then, "Here, this is what went on." Because applications come in, certain things come in at a different time. Some of them are greater than other things, and I want to make sure that our connection fees and the privilege fees are going to be handed out.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Cave has a comment, and I see Mr. Tisdale coming to the front so he can talk about the process to make that happen. But Vice Chair Cave?
So in general, when we have a member of the board who has expertise that is of special value to an area of our work, I appreciate them having the latitude to be able to dig more deeply into it. And so I feel comfortable, perfectly comfortable, making sure that you have access to that, to make that a policy or whatever we have to do to make that true. As far as these things coming to all members of the board, I don't know if that's valuable. Like, you can send them to me. They're going to be of no value to me, right?
I wasn't here on the meeting where the water policy was given away, and it was just, "It's all going to be done over there." I'm just asking to see the applications as they come in.
Yeah, I think it's a very fair request. And I'm sure that... I don't know how we formulate it. We can certainly vote on it. It's just a policy that any member of the board who requests access to applications as they come in be given those applications so you don't have to ask for them specifically, but whenever something comes in, it gets sent to you. So I'll just make a motion that the Select Board adopt a policy where any member of the Select Board who requests water and/or sewer connection applications that comes into the town to receive them as they become available.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
An animus decision. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I can just summarize this, and Scott's the most familiar.
And it's not the ones that normal guys come in and say, "Hey, I gotta..." It's the stuff that would come before us if it's, you know, street connection one, and it required the board to look at it. That's all I'm interested in.
So, I mean, the point of this policy is to formalize what we already do in place. You know, we actually do it, but it's... We don't have anything in words to define how we do it. So 90% of our applications are sewer connections. So it's a little connection from the house to a main in the street. As Scott knows, that's the most common application. Once in a while, you get something called an extension where the sewer main is extended down the street. Things like that, we usually always do the technical reviews, and we'll always throw it in front of the street commissioners because eventually, they're going to have to open up the street. And there may be other utility issues. So that would always come in front of your board for approval in the future. And things like privilege fees and betterments, that would have to come in front of you. This policy has nothing to do with betterments or privilege fees. And soon, when the Park Street pump station's up and running, which would be very soon, you'll see a lot of that kind of information coming in front of your board.
Thank you very much. Okay. On the...
Could I ask a quick question of...
Absolutely, Mr. Gito.
The town engineer. And that is, do you keep that information somewhere, or is this going to be... I mean, to make it easy for anyone to see it? Or is it going to be an extra step that you have to do?
No. I mean, no. This is very readily-available information, all these sewer connections that come in.
So anybody could see?
Oh, yeah. I mean, anybody could come in. We'd open-book policy. And honestly, when we get the electronic permitting online soon, everybody will be able to see it.
That's where I was going. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Okay. On the motion to accept the Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, D... This is the... I've already read them all.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda Items A through D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. Moving right along to... I think we left off at our town manager comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief statement from the town treasurer-collector, Paula Newt. The treasurer-collector issued the FY '24 third and fourth quarter real estate and personal property tax bills on December 31, 2023. The third and fourth quarter remit copies were in the same envelope. The third-quarter tax bill was due February 1, 2024. All unpaid quarterly taxes have accrued interest at 14% from the first quarter's due date. The real estate and property tax bill may be paid by mail, at town hall, dropped in the drop box outside of town hall, or paid online at stoughton.org. Please call the collector's office at 781-341-1300, extension 9222, if you have any questions about your real estate or personal property tax bill. The collector's office is now accepting payments by credit and debit cards in the collector's office for all tax, water, sewer, and trash bills. There is a 3% fee for paying your tax or water, sewer, or trash bills with a credit card or debit card. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to citizens' comments. If we could keep that to a maximum of three minutes each. Yes, Mrs. Carrara? Yes, Mrs. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I'm not an auctioneer, but I hope I'll be under three minutes. The three events that previous speakers have mentioned, I was able to attend only because of some extraordinary efforts that were made to make sure that people with handicaps like myself could attend, especially the Indigenous and African American presentation. And I know that a lot of that burden fell onto the custodial staff, and I want to thank everyone who made such a supreme effort so that one little old lady could go to all of those events comfortably. Speaking of comfortable events, last week, there was a Chinese New Year luncheon at the Senior Center. Not an empty seat in the house. In fact, we could have set up a patio full of people, too. And the place was suitably decorated, you would have thought you were in a restaurant in Chinatown. And again, that was thanks to the custodian at the Senior Center, being willing to go up and down a ladder, putting all those Chinese lanterns in the ceiling. It was just extraordinary, and I hope in the future, I know there's a lot of projects people have in mind, but we really need to expand the Senior Center so that more seniors can attend these events. Their limit is 100, and there's way more than 100 seniors in Stoughton. There are thousands. And I hope that's something that people will consider. The last thing before the egg timer is finished, is I continue to be the Chair of the Municipal Operations Committee. So at the end of tonight's meeting, after the warrant closes, I'd appreciate a copy of the warrant, so I'd have one for the Rules Committee meeting on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Walsh. Are there any other Citizens' comments? I'm looking in the audience and online. With there being none...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Calder.
Mr. Tisdale just reminded me that I missed one announcement. If you indulge me, may I read it?
Oh, sure. Please feel free.
Thank you. I apologize to Mr. Tisdale. He had me rehearse with him, and I completely missed it. This is regarding the Bird Street Trails Improvement and Parking Area. It's a statement from the Development Team. In 2022, the Town of Stoughton was awarded Mass Trails Grant from the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the improvement of Bird Street Trail Network. During the grant application process, community profile information is included to provide the granting authority a full picture of our community. According to the 2020 Census, Stoughton is identified as an environmental justice community with several unserved populations. In a section of that application regarding EJ communities, the potential of providing occasional council of aging bus services and the exploration of expanded Bat Bus service was discussed. While these topics were discussed as part of the grant application process, it is important to note that the grant awarded to the town did not, and I repeat, did not require any changes to bus service. The scope of the grant is strictly limited to the installation of bogboards, boardwalks, turnpiking, the additional parking area off Bird Street, and wayfaring signs within the trail network. The Town is not considering any changes to the bus service in this area. Thank you, Madam Chair. To those interested in this issue, I think this is very important to them, and I know they know exactly what we're talking about. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was very important that you share that. Okay, we'll move right along to our item number five. And I know this is a joint meeting with the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. The item is Interviews of Applicants to Stoughton Redevelopment Authority and Appointments. I don't believe, we don't have, I don't believe we can take any action because there are no candidates to talk about.
Well, I move that we re-advertise and see if we can get candidates in.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Are there any candidates?
Is that Roberta Harback? I didn't see.
Yes.
Yes.
I say something.
Hello.
I'm on the Redevelopment Authority, Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, and unfortunately, I thought that would take some...
Excuse me, your voice is going in and out. We didn't hear, we're hearing every other word.
Okay, it's Roberta Harback. I'm on the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, and I just wanted you to know that it appears that on the ballot, there will be two openings for the Redevelopment Authority, one for the five-year term, and one for this three-year term that we were supposed to meet on tonight. And I believe that we didn't meet on it, there was no applicants, because the term was only good until April of 2024. And I thought it would have been a longer appointment between the two boards than just a six-week term. So I don't think we should re-advertise it at this point. I think we, it will be on the ballot. Like I said, there will be two vacancies, they will have to be write-ins. And if we get no response after April, maybe we can revisit reposting it. And at least at that time, it would be for an 11-month term.
Before we move on, are you the only one online that... I'm just worried about if you have a quorum present for SRA.
No, we specifically do not have a quorum here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Do we have it, but I felt one of us should come on and explain the situation about the ballot, and not to reappoint it right away until after April, if we do not get anybody to be a write-in at the ballot box in April.
Thank you very much. That clarifies things. Thanks.
So, I, yeah, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, with just a lot of respect for Ms. Harback, I just wanted to confirm that that position is, in fact, on the ballot, and that a writing candidate would, in fact, get that seat. I know there's, within our own charter, I believe, and within national law, there are timeframes that allow for that to be true, but I'm just not aware what they are, and if this would fall into that timeframe.
Let's ask our Town Council.
Bill Silver, Town Clerk here.
Town Clerk here.
Yeah.
Okay. Town Clerk, is she still here? Okay, she was.
You want me to...
Maybe she didn't hear the question, did you? You want her to repeat the question, Mrs. Carrera?
Well, I don't mind just repeating, that we have one vacancy currently in the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority.
Yes, we have a five-year term. The person that has that term now did not pull papers and is not going to run again. So that would be on our ballot. And then I will be also putting in for someone resigned and had a three-year term left. So I will be putting that on the ballot. Now, I cannot accurately answer all of what you need, but I can email you and the Board, I can do it through the Town Manager's Secretary and to the Board of Selectment Secretary, and get you the accurate information. But my plan was to have, definitely have the five-year term, and we are the person who still had three years. I would look, I would put, as of right now, I'm putting that on, but I cannot accurately answer, like, the statute questions and stuff, because the Redevelopment Authority is just a little different than our regular town boards.
Sure, sure, yeah. I just wanted, this was like a trust but verify, like, I have a lot of faith in Roberta Harback, to be correct. But I just, before we rescind the vote, I just wanted to make sure that we confirmed that, in fact, is the case. What I would say simply is that, if you don't mind just getting back to really the folks in Town Hall, the Town Manager, can make that, confirm that. If that's the case, then, yeah, I agree, let's not advertise, it's already on the ballot.
We did, I did speak to Mrs. Harback, and I did let her know this information. I just, to be honest, I just had, I wanted to make sure everything was okay for tonight, for my stuff, so.
No, it's a problem, no problem. Since you were here, I figured I'd ask.
Thank you.
And you know so many of these things off the top of your head, I thought, but you don't know everything.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. I had a quick question. I'm sorry, Mr. Gito.
Could we put on the ballot those two positions, but just put them on and have a notation that the person with the higher number gets the five-year term, the next person gets the three-year term? Could we do that or not? I mean, I don't know if you can or you cannot. It just seems to me that you may end up not having anybody that wants to get a three-year term. Or maybe both people would like to try it out and get a three-year term, in which case you might not have anybody for the other.
As of right now, my plan is to do one for a five-year spot and one for a three-year spot. But as far as the statute, I don't have it in front of me, so I cannot accurately answer that, but I will research that tomorrow, and I will email Jilda and Cece, the Town Manager, on it so that they can both forward the information to you. It's similar to, I understand what you're saying, but I want to be more accurate, because the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority is a little different than, say, a Board of Selectmen spot or a Town Meeting spot, and I want to be accurate for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carrera.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carrera.
We went through this once before, and I can't remember when it was, it was like in 2004 or something like that. But the positions are in the ballot, as the clerk said, one's three-year, one's five-year. If your name goes on the three-year and you get the most, then you get it. You don't get the five-year because you applied for the three-year. It's very simple. Can't, you can't say, Lou got all the votes, let's give him the five, but half of his were written into the three-year. You can't do that. They're two separate positions, and that's, they're on an official ballot.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, are we ready to move on to the next topic? Okay, so we're moving on to, oh, you might as well stay there, Mrs. Carrera, our Town Clerk, to consider, okay. Let the records reflect. Mr. Carrera is moving. Item number six, to consider discontinuance of AccuVote voting machines and implementation of election systems and software, aka ESSNSDS200 voting machines. Votes may be taken on that. Yes, can you please, Mrs. Carrera, provide a little context for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. These machines are called DS200. In the state of Massachusetts, there are only two companies that actually have certified with the state that can be used for elections. It's either this or a company that LHS puts out. And what it is, is these machines, I had a committee, we interviewed both companies, we asked very intense questions, and after we met with both companies, the committee, who consisted of Mr. Cave, myself, and our IT Director, Trish Shoppshire, and our procurement officer facilitated, we decided that after very long discussions, that we felt that ESNS was the machine to go with. They have 24-hour customer service. The other company only has customer service on elections night till, like, maybe 8:00. And we felt that, especially in a very important election year, it was best to go with a more accessible company. And we chose the ESNS and the DS200. And actually, we currently use the ESNS. They handle our handicap machines. And those handicap machines help people that are hearing impaired, that have vision issues, and actually, anyone can really use them. You sit, and you would just touch the screen, and then you hit print, and prints out, and you can put your ballot in the box.
Thank you, Mr. Calder.
So, Madam Chair, as I'm sure Steph will tell you, and it's in the materials, the statute requires that the Board authorize the discontinuance of the current machine and the acceptance of the newer machine that is required by the statute. So what you have before you is a motion with that information regarding the discontinuance of one and the planned use of another after a certain prescribed statutory period. So you should have that before you right now.
Madam Chair, the statutory requires 120 days, and in the motion, it has the dates that you need to refer to.
Thank you, Steph.
Yes, Vice Chair Cave.
So I was part of the committee that interviewed the two companies, and I do apologize, I actually forgot the other company's name, though we are currently using their machines. Both were excellent companies. The things that stood out to me was that ESNS has a national presence, whereas the other company, I've forgotten the name, I apologize, has a regional presence that is very strong.
LHS.
Was it?
LHS.
LHS, had a regional, more just regional New England reach. So ESNS's national exposure, we thought, well, at least I should say, I thought, had a better representation, gave us a better chance of having these machines tested in some much more complex elections throughout the nation. And the other main issue was, as the Town Clerk mentioned, they had a very different amount of support, that LHS would have a regional representative available somewhere in the general area that could be, that could show up within, I think, like, two hours or something like that. ESNS will have somebody in each polling location to answer any questions that we have. And their support was really, stood out as something that was above and beyond.
One thing I'd like to add, Madam Chair, is that not only are these machines, but more, I felt that they were much easier for our poll workers to use. They're all, they also, they're going to come out, we get two training sessions with them, so I thought we would use these machines for the quieter primary in September, and I would have the staff, ESNS said we're going to be dedicated to us for one election, which would be the presidential in November. But I do want to go on the record and say, so everyone at home can hear, and you can hear, this machine is not on the Wi-Fi. So I just want everybody to know that, that they, we have a USB, you put it in, and you just plug it into the wall. We don't have to connect to any passwords or anything like that. I just want to make sure that everyone is clear. Because at Town Meeting, it was the first time I really had to ask for money, and I was a little overwhelmed. I know I put on a facade that I'm rock solid, but when you've got a lot of people asking questions, and this is the first time I've had to ask for money, it was a very humbling experience. So I just, and I thought it was on the Wi-Fi, but it is not, and I just wanted everybody here to know and at home.
Can I...
Sorry.
Can you repeat the reason we want to discontinue the current machines? It was because it jammed up, you put your ballot in, it wouldn't catch it, wouldn't go through. What were some of the other reasons for the change?
These machines are obsolete now, and they're not making the parts. They're not servicing them as they once were. These were the top-of-the-line machines back when I, 15, 20 years ago. Now, everything's starting to change, and the machines are getting worn, and I will give you a prime example, if anyone was a voter at Precinct 3, which is the South School, we had, the machines kept breaking down, we had to have a police officer, we had to hand count, and they're tired. And it's either you're going to go with LHS, or you're going to go with the DS200 with ESNS. I did, my homework, surrounding towns are using it, Sharon's using the DS200, Hanover's using the DS200. I think they have about 20... I think they have about 20, no, I'm misspeaking. I believe they have a total of perhaps 40 towns that are now using these machines, and I feel that these were the better machines to go with because the other ones are just too old, and we're in eight, we have 13 precincts now and seven locations. And when one breaks down, and people with the political climate now, it's best that we have accurate machines so people feel comfortable when they vote. And I feel with the older AccuVote machines, where they're breaking down, it's giving people doubts, and I want to put them at ease.
Thank you very much. I thought I saw Mr. Gito's hand.
Yeah, I guess my question is, why don't we get to the motion to approve these?
Well, I've got a motion in front of me, so I'll read it.
Yes, please do.
I moved that the Select Board vote in accordance with General Law Chapter 54, Section 34, and 950 CMR 50, to discontinue the use of AccuVote voting machines effective on April 30, 2024, and to begin using election systems and software, AKA ESNS DS200 voting machines effective of August 28, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we're moving right to our item number seven, 745. We're, I don't know what time, a little bit late, but it's to consider and discuss inclusion of town meeting article, abandoned and neglected properties. Mr. Gito.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose for putting this article forward is that it seems to be part of what we would want to do in order to beautify the town. We've talked about doing things that will be helpful, we've seen things that are sort of out of whack. I put in a PowerPoint presentation with a couple of pictures. I mean, I'm not trying to single out anyone or anything else, but just for the purpose of educating the board on what we might see pretty easily around the town. That was that. The town council indicated that this was, and Mr. Tisdale indicated that this was not a strong bylaw, but it's a start. If we have a better bylaw later on, we can replace this one. But the purpose of my giving you the PowerPoint is that it starts a process to get everybody who has a property that seems to be a problem, sort of into a schedule to look at what they are and be able to have a discussion about what are you going to do about it. And I think that that begins a process of trying to get voluntary compliance, making people look at what their property is like and how it's viewed by other folks. You know, people have properties everywhere, and they can just sort of go out of their mind as something that's important to deal with. So that was the purpose of this. We don't need to follow a track to do anything with all of the properties or any of the properties, but it might be helpful to be able to do something with some of them that seem to be more egregious than others. When we go from having a voluntary system into litigious kind of a process, town council would say, man, that's a swamp, and it takes a lot of work to get through those. I mean, he and I have had a brief discussion about that. So, I mean, that's, this is just a process to start a process.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gito. What I was asking Gilda is to find that PowerPoint slide so you could walk us through. I'm sure the audience would like to hear it, and that's what she was pulling up.
Well, I was trying to get to the predicate.
Oh, yeah.
Because this PowerPoint presentation, if you pull it up, just said, here are other towns that, do you want to pull it up? A lot of towns are doing this. We ought to follow their example. Slide two. There are some pictures of areas up near Ash Street, and then the next slide shows pictures in the downtown area. We don't need to focus on those. I mean, there are any number that we could be dealing with in town, and I didn't pick them out because I had any reason to do that aside from where are they relative to where people pass through? Next slide. Nobody can read this, and it basically says, here's a, I can read, I can. There are a lot of reasons for dealing with distressed properties. They sort of provide a blight to the neighborhood, they can bring health issues and safety issues as well. I could go through this whole thing. Nobody wants to hear this. We're going to make a decision to put this on and not put it on the agenda, and there'll be time to talk about it when we get to meetings after this. So let me go through, continue to go through it in a rapid pace. We have the opportunity for voluntary compliance on the next chart, and that's the process, really, that we should be using. I indicated the next slide that to go through the more rigorous process, if people aren't willing to do anything. This is a difficult, costly, and time-intensive, and it's sort of like the housing court enforcement process. So we could go through that, and I'd be happy to put this all online. I think I missed a page, goodness gracious. I shouldn't put things on two sheets, on both sides. Could we go to the next one after that, and then the next one? Because I don't have very much more to say. So if we get into difficult times, you know, there are a whole lot of regulations, we can go to criminal law, property tax law, so on and so forth. But the purpose really is to begin a process to fix things. And if we want to do that, we should do it. And if we don't want to do it, we should vote against putting it in. And if we vote to put it in, it's not going to be my article, it's going to be the board's article, not my article. I just put it before you. I guess I'm, I guess that's my privilege, being on the board. So if anybody has any questions about the details of this, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yeah. Have Vice Chair Kavy, have Mr. Carrera, either or?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. It's mostly a comment. I've been involved in stuff like this, in Rantham, in Northborough, and when I was involved in it, it was because the building inspector sent something to the people, they ignored them, then the fire chief got involved. Your fire chief is the strongest person in your town. They can, the fire chief can deem the property unsafe and order it raised. The people can fight them, but if they don't want to make good on it, I don't know if we really, we tried this before, if you remember. It was just in a different language. I think there's enough master general laws that were on this paperwork that if there's a complaint, then we have the staff that deals with it. I mean, it'd be, they have the tools, that's all I have to say. I don't, I don't think we need to have an embarrassment article to force people when, if something's there, then the fire chief and the building inspector will handle it. And then they order and they pay the contractor who tears it down.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Vice Chair Kavy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Gito, when I first received this article, I'm just going to sort of lay out some of my own chronology with this. When I first received the request for this article, my main concern was that some of the body, most of the body of the statute, essentially, the policy itself, wasn't included. And so my initial reaction was to hold off on this until we had something formulated. I later received what you've presented here, what you've provided to us, that includes some guidelines for exactly what would happen, which was helpful. And for that reason, I would feel comfortable moving forward with this. But sort of, I guess, under a certain condition that I think maybe you've just contradicted. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. If this is your article that you're going to champion through and present on to boards and other committees, and then at town meeting, as a member of the Select Board, I think that having that right to insert these articles and to defend specific articles that you're looking to champion is something that I support. But I, as the article as written, as currently written, I don't know if I necessarily would vote for this at town meeting. So if it's something that's representing the Select Board, then I would be less reticent to insert it. If it's something that you're looking to champion, then as a courtesy to a fellow board member, I would vote to insert it. But if it's now something that I'm giving my own blessing to, with really not a lot of time to consider the full impact of the policy itself, I don't feel like I'm prepared to support that.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Kavy. Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to pick up on a couple of things that Mr. Kavy said, not being ready, you know, work on it. This has the signatures of the Select Board to go to town meeting. I haven't had a chance to review any of this information. It was thrown in last minute. I can't, I can't support something like this. I want to know what we're doing. As much as I agree that we're in need of some changes, I want to pick up on what Mr. Carrera said, is that we do have mechanisms in place. I have no problem supporting an article, but I want to know what it is, not it could be, and let's work on it. I mean, I'm not going to throw anything at town meeting that is, you know, we've got a short period of time to come up with something that works for the town. It needs input from all of our department heads in their respective areas. This is not ready. I won't vote for it, and I would encourage my colleagues to not. I'm sorry, Mr. Gito, I mean, I'm with you in theory on this, but it's first I've heard about it, other than a couple of days that I got this presentation. And, you know, I want more time to talk with people and find out, is this something that we want to bring to town meeting because it has our name on it? You know, and when it gets there, we want to be able to stand up united on this board and say, this is good for the town, that's why we're recommending it. And that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no problem with this not being on the warrant. I mean, you know, where I live, I don't, I don't have a neighbor that has a house that's falling down, and if nobody on the board cares to address this issue at this time, that's fine with me. I put it in because I heard that people didn't like the way the town looked and would like to see something, and I think it's appropriate, Mr. McCrisky's comments and Mr. Kavy's as well, that we not deal with it now if you want to take more time and look at it. I don't have a problem with that. I really do not. So, I mean, I'm not going to die in my sword on this thing. I mean, really, I don't, I'm not trying to put anything over on anyone or do something that is untoward. It was meant to be helpful, and that's all it was. And so, please, let's take a vote on it, probably five to zero, not to insert it. It's not a problem. It really isn't. So we don't need to sort of see, I don't need to be lectured to. Thank you.
Mr. Gito, I, one of the comments that I heard is that it does have merit, but it's kind of late, and it needed some more development. I know one of the things that I thought about was, I'm all for the beautification of the town of Stoughton, but I also, first thing that came to my mind was, in our own backyard, the armory, well, are we taking care of our own property before we?
Madam Chair, could I interrupt you just for a moment?
Yes, you certainly can, Mr. Gito.
This is a vote to approve or disapprove, putting something on the agenda, into the warrant. When we have a discussion before any board on this issue, if it comes back at any time, we should spend a lot of time talking about that, and at the appropriate board meetings. But let's get on with the meeting. Let's call the question, I would like to call the question, and have it voted down so that we could move on with our life. You know, it's, I don't know what time it is now, but I'll, thank you.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gito, hold on for a minute before we move on.
Oh, okay.
Mr. McCrisky, you were saying?
No, I just want to respond to that because it was brought here, I believe, in a thoughtful purpose, but now, a thoughtful purpose, but you said something that scared the hell out of me when you said neighbors' houses. Now, we have properties that are not in good condition in our neighborhoods, but a lot of people, that's not their own doings, and there's other situations. People have different economic levels, ability to pay, maybe if somebody is a senior that's been living in their house, that they can't come up and put new siding and so forth. I don't want a bylaw that puts somebody where we can now start ratting out our neighborhood, you know, because they don't like what they see.
Neither do I, Mr. McCrisky, and this had nothing to do with that at all.
But I didn't say you had anything to do with it. This is the way I'm going to bring something to town meeting, Mr. Gito, as a member of this board, and these are the things that concern me. I can, you put on all the pictures you had up there on Park Street, I agree wholeheartedly with you. There's businesses that own properties. If I had my way, we would demolish it and backcharge them, you know? But I'm all for the article. It needs to work.
Well, we have, we have a board here that could begin that process, Mr. McCrisky, and when you'd like to do that, I will take it upon myself to review very carefully the demolition of properties and perhaps support you.
All right, we can work on it together.
Okay. On the motion to insert.
Motion to, I have to make a positive motion.
Yes.
And I probably shouldn't make it, seeing I put the thing together.
Whatever you would like, Mr. Gito. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion. Motion to insert this article into the warrant. Would somebody, somebody could at least second it so we could vote against it?
If no one seconds it, it dies.
Okay. Okay, good enough.
Okay, this is dead. Next topic, so it's the warrant.
I feel appropriately chastised.
Please don't feel that way. At 8:15, we could do the hearing. So would you like to take, it's now 8:12, three-minute recess? Let's take a three-minute recess. Okay, thank you very much. We'll take a three-minute recess and reconvene. Hello, everyone. We're calling this, are you ready to restart? Okay. I think, so what we're going to do is, we have to, we have to read all of the articles, and then we have to insert the articles, then vote on that, and then close.
Okay.
Okay, we just go down the chart. Okay.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
That's okay. Okay, the select board meeting is reconvening at 8:18 PM. Item, close the warrant first, insert, and then close the warrant. And I, Mr. Tisdale, are you taking the lead on this?
Are we doing the hearing?
No, we're going to do item, oh, let's, let's do the hearing. You want to do the hearing next? Because Karen is hearing.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, how about that? I don't mind. Okay. 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 We're taking things out of order. We're going to the hearing. That is abatement application, request for a hearing. Is the owner here? Campanellus? Hello, how are you? So would you like to step forward, just so we could hear more about your issue, your concern, your abatement application? And then we can hear from Karen what she's done to help with identify and resolve the issue. The select board will ask some probing questions, and then we will make a decision. So, Vice Chair Cavie, would you like to open the hearing? Okay. Do we have to open? I don't believe we have to open it.
Oh, got it.
But just in case.
So, this is the abatement application hearing for Simos Campanellus, 17 Clifford Street. I move that we open the hearing for his water abatement quest, request for 17 Clifford
Please, there's a button on your microphone, so we can hear you.
Sir, if I may.
Ah.
If I may, sir. Just for the record, Madam Chair, the abatement was considered by the Water Department Director and, and was denied at the local level. So this is an appeal of the, of the Director of the Department, the Department head's decision.
Okay. Thank you.
And, correction, it is 17 Clifford Avenue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
The reason I'm here is to ask you to give me a break on a very high bill I received. See, I go to Greece from May until December, and usually, the last 10 years, my uses for that period is zero, zero use. And, but, in 2022, when I came back, I received a bill for 5,900 cubic feet. It should have been zero. The only thing I can think of is, because, you know, my fiancee and my son used to take care of the house, they go in and out probably a couple of times a week. Most likely, you know, they flush the toilet, because I noticed one of the toilets once, once in a while, it gets stuck. You know, you flush it, and it does not, you know, it doesn't go down and keeps running. So most likely, they flushed the toilet, they went out, and they came back like three, four days, five days, a week later, I don't know, I wasn't here. And this is probably what happened. Because they checked the meter, and they replaced the meter, and they tested, it was accurate. So there's no leak in the house. You know, the basement is dry, bone dry, and there's no leak anywhere. So the only thing I can think of is, you know, it was a stuck toilet in the open position for a few days. And I'd like you to give me a break on that. I mean, I, I, for that period, I usually paid the minimum, it's about $150, and I had to pay $926, $929. So if you can do something, I would appreciate it.
So, Mr. Campanellus does go to Greece. We actually sent him an email to let him know that he had this bill coming for the 5,900 cubic feet.
You didn't tell me exactly how much. It says it's a high bill, but you didn't tell me how much.
Well, we said it was a high bill, but we reached out to you even before.
I'm sorry, all, all comments have to be directed towards the chair. And we don't, we don't talk to each other in this case, okay? Thank you very much.
So we did reach out to him before to let him know that he had this large bill coming on February 2nd. The bills are going out February 14th of 2023. So we let him know this was coming. He did not have any answer to give us for why the bill was so high. He said his son kept an eye on the house, watered the lawn here and there, and we did tell him on February 2nd, the reason why we were asking about your high bill is because your next bill is going to be based on 5,900 cubic feet. So he did know what was coming. We were never, this is the first I'm hearing about anything, that possibility of a toilet leaking, was never told that at all. And the fact that he was not home, there was no leaks, there is no leak still. We have no reason to abate it. The water went through the meter. We did change out the meter. The read coincides with the meter that we pulled out. We have an actual visual read, it's on the card, and then we put the new meter in. So we don't know why this happened, but his next bill was back down to normal. So something happened, the water went through the meter, and there's no, we have no reason, no explanation, no, nothing. So that's why we denied the abatement.
Thank you very much. Do any of our select board members have any, any questions? I thought I saw a hand come up. Guess not. Was that you, Mr. Calder? Did you have?
After the select board has had their opportunity. I do have a question.
Okay. So I don't, oh, Mr. Carrera, I thought I saw someone.
Through you, Madam Chair, and to Mr. Campanellus. You said you had one toilet that was acting up?
No. I notice, I'm back here now, once, once in a while, one of the toilets, when you flush it, does not close, stays open. So you have to go jiggle it.
Well, that's one, that's a toilet acting up.
Yes.
So you, you admitted that? It's hard, it's hard to explain to somebody how much water can go through a small hole over a period of time.
Like I said, I wasn't here, I was out of the country, so, you know, probably was running for a week.
The only, the only problem with that is, you, you can't plead, I don't want to use the word, you can't plead stupidity. It's, it happened. It went through the, the meter, and it must have went down the sword, too.
Madam Chair, I want to make clear to the gentleman that nobody's passing judgment here. If there was a, a leaking toilet, I experienced that years ago in my own home, as Mr. Carrera has pointed out, that running for a period of time produces, uses a lot of water. There's nobody at fault here, and there's nobody judging you. But I can tell you from my own personal experience that that has happened, and I was shocked by the bill. But I do have a question for Karen. Is it your experience that if there's a, the jingling of the handle, if it's running continuously for several days, could that, could that be an explanation?
Yes.
For the excessive usage?
Yes.
But I want to once again reiterate, sir, nobody's judging you on this. Nobody, you didn't do anything wrong. But while you were away, if that was running, that would explain the bill. That would explain the usage. So Madam Chair, what I think the gentleman is asking for is, he's not disputing the usage.
He's asking for some relief.
Yes, ma'am.
So what type of relief are you asking?
My normal bill for that period of time is usually $150.
$150?
Instead of $929.
Instead of how much again?
$929 I paid.
Nine, 159 is what you usually pay per month?
Yes, 150, one, you know, yeah, the, the, the minimum, it's zero use, but you have to pay, there is a standard, you know, fee for sewer, minimum. And I don't pay for trust collection either, because I'm not here.
Is this your first offense? I, I didn't see that in the records.
Yes, the first. I've been in the house for 15 years, first time.
Been in the house for 50 years, and this is the fir, and you routinely go away?
Since I retired, 10 years ago, I'm, I'm going to Greece for six months, each year, yes, yes. And I have the bills to show you, you know, the use, the usage for the last three or four years, you know, I haven't here, if you want to, if you want to see them.
We have that, too, yeah.
You do?
Yes, we have copies, Miss Karen provided that to us. Yes, Mr. Calder?
Madam Chair, one other question for the gentleman, and it's really for education for the public. Sir, you're saying that after you replaced or repaired the toilet?
I did not, I was sure, I did not replace, I didn't do anything. I noticed, I'm here, select, once, maybe once a week, you flush the toilet, and you have to wait until it stops running.
I understand.
I, I didn't do anything, I didn't fix anything.
It may be wise, you know?
It's stuck in the open position, you know, the flapper, you have to jiggle it, and goes down, and that's it.
It may just be wise, if we could suggest prior to the board make their decision, that before you leave for Greece next, you may want to change that part of the toilet.
Yes, you're right, I'm going to do that, yes, I'll do it myself.
So that it's not running by chance while you're gone.
I'll do that, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calder. Are there any other questions? Oh, yes, Mr. Gito, and then Mr. McCrisky.
Could he, um, pay the bill over time without any interest being charged?
I paid the bill, sorry.
Oh, it's already paid, okay. Thank you. And no other questions?
All right. Mr. McCrisky?
I just want to remind my colleagues, we've had people come here in the past, and we've held steadfast on the policy. There's no indication here that the town did anything wrong. This was a leak on the private property. If, in, in going, the bill's already been paid, so we can't provide any leniency, but we would be opening up Pandora's Box if we were to do anything different than what we've been doing. And as much as I would like to help you as well, you know, we would have people come knocking on our doors that didn't get the decision they liked, whether it be through the Water Department or here. So if we're going to enact a policy, we need to stick with the policy, we don't have anything. And so, I wish I could support, you know, a discount for you, but the time to do it would have been the time that you were talking to the Water Department, you know, and I don't know.
I tried to.
If it was just, you said you tried to?
Yeah, I changed the meter.
Right. But I'm saying that the, the water went through you, through your meter, and you paid the bill, okay? You've admitted you've had a toilet problem, that you have to jiggle it. To Mr. Carrera's point, that should have been fixed. If he, if it had been fixed, you may not have had that water issue, because that's all it takes.
I didn't realize I had a problem until this year.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But again, it just doesn't change the fact, whether you knew it or not, you know, the water went through that meter. So it's, it's a difficult, these are the worst thing, barking dogs, you know, and these water issues are the worst thing that I vote for on these boards. You want to try to help somebody, but the policy is the policy, and there was somebody very close to my own family that went through the same thing, you know, and I had to look them in the face and say, you know, the water went through the meter. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Vice Chair Cavie.
Thank you. I, I agree with my colleagues, you know, the, the problem we run into is that the water, our water service, Water and Sewer operates essentially at a break even. We are only trying to charge exactly what it costs for, for this water to get to people. To abate a bill where? people. To abate a bill where you admit the water passed through your meter means that the cost to the town is still the same. And what it requires us to do is to take the money that, that, the cost that would have gone to you and spread it across the rest of the community and essentially indemnify certain, you know, members who come to us against the fault, their own, their own faulty plumbing, things that happen inside their house. And I, I don't, I feel like we, we ought not do that. I feel like if, if I were to tell you before this that you were covering the cost of your neighbor's water bill, that we decided to not charge them for the water bill, instead we're going to charge you for it, I think you'd find that unfair. And I think that the same standard applies here. I, I've been in the same position you are in. For me, it was, it was water that was outside my house. There was a garden hose that I, I had set to be on an automatic timer and way before I wake up in the morning. And I ran that thing almost into the winter and, you know, well beyond what I should have. And it was a particularly rainy season, summer anyway. I, I was, it was, I will admit, I, I had very poor judgment in this and it was entirely my own fault. But when I got the bill, I was shocked, but at the same time, that water passed through my meter and, and that was my, my responsibility. I understand it's, it's hard, hard to, to, you know, sort of hard to deal with, with a large bill, especially in times when you weren't there. However, your home has, has water pass through your meter and passing that bill on to the rest of the community, I don't, I think is unfair. And I think that unfortunately, I'm not in support of abating this, this. And I do feel for you though, so I apologize for that, that you've had that experience.
Are there any other questions or on the motion? Yes, please. Oh, yes. Can we make a motion? I'm open to it. Oh, Mr. Carrera. Mr. McCrisky?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to disapprove the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The next item.
Thank you, Karen.
Is Oriya Love Story Restaurant? I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, to correct it. I didn't have my microphone on, sorry.
Is it on?
Mine is on now. Yours was always on. Hello, nice seeing you.
Good evening, everyone.
This is taking a while to come back.
He has taken a little while to.
This has taken a little while. Wow.
So, yes, I am here because there was some discrepancies in the paperwork, ones that we presented to ABCC, and it came back that we needed to correct it, all of those. And for all, oh my goodness, for all of that to happen, I had to be in front of the board for you to approve it and to move on to the next step to, of the process.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Kavy?
Madam Chair, the, the town has, has looked into this application and fires found no objections. Police have found no disqualifying or concerning information. Board of Health records that there's no known issues at the time. Most recent food safety inspection on 10-723, most recent grease trap receipt for, by Hometown Plumbing, 51223. Building zoning has no issues. Treasury Office, no objection, and Water Department, no objections. And they note that the meters have been replaced. Given this business has longstanding neighborship in the town and, and how long you've been here and, and how appreciated I think your, your services are, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the request for, let's see, it is for a wine and malt liquor license.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything.
Good evening. Thank you.
Moving right along to item number, just a minute. We're on the warrant now. Mr. Tisdale, that's who we're looking for. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
All right.
All righty.
So from the select board standpoint, you are here to close the warrant tonight after, as you know, we had a time schedule starting in September with initial department requests being submitted for budgets and general articles being submitted to the town manager. And now we've had probably 20 to 30 steps since then in that schedule. And now we're here at the, the final hour to close the warrant on February 6th. So when you close the warrant, as you know, we have two days. We can send it over to the finance committee at that point. I've spoken to our town council. He can be the lead on getting the, the warrant, the approved warrant to town, to the finance committee at that point. I also have all the backup information, all the quotes and estimates and things of that nature that we will deliver to the finance committee that day also. We also come up with a good tracking sheet. So there's good communication between boards and committees at town meeting that Steve Kavy started off about two or three years ago, and we've expanded a little bit. So everybody receives the information. They see the sheet. They sign off on it and they received it. So we'll continue implementing that spreadsheet. That process has been very successful. In the warrant, a lot of times you have just the article language of just the article. This warrant is a little different this year in, in a better way, where we believe it's, 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 it's got a little more information in there. It has the proposed motion. Most of the proposed motions are finalized. They're pretty solid. There is, there are several proposed motions that do need a little time because we need to finalize some of the numbers and we've left blanks in there. So they're like 95% there. But thanks to Brian, Brian, our town council, really worked hard on the, on the motions over the last week or two to try to get them into a really good format for our finance committee when they get the warrant on, on Thursday. In summary, this year you have 52 town articles, if you want to call it that, and then four petition articles. As you know, there's nothing you can really do about the petition articles. There's no words you can change. They automatically get inserted into the warrant. So you're really focusing on Article 1 through 52 on the summary, summary chart tonight. That's all I got for now.
Are there several articles that are being dismissed or removed?
Yeah, that's a good point. So throughout the process, there's articles that have gone on and off. They've gotten purged. So from the time you've seen this in your packet that was sent out Thursday, there was a couple, you know, edits to articles within that from department head request and from the school department conversation with, with our town manager today. There was a couple of articles removed. This is the most current version. I put a printed copy on your desk of the summary chart and the warrant as it stood as of about 5 o'clock today.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Mr. Coulter.
So I'm not sure the numbers because they've been deleted, but I will tell you that late this afternoon, Scott has withdrawn the DPW article for the revolving fund.
Please, what number was that?
Do you know what number that?
52 on the chart in front of you. Yep.
Okay, that's been removed?
Yes. I have withdrawn the article for changing the VNA away from a, a match price fund to a regular department, to a regular department. We're withdrawing that. And there is a transportation article that was in there for the schools. It's one of their five articles that the superintendent has to remove for transportation. Do you see that? Do you know the number?
I don't see those. What number?
That's off. That's not even there.
So it's no longer there?
No longer there. Oh.
It's no longer there.
We updated this as of 4 o'clock today and Scott withdrew his at 5.
I, I would also add to, to Mr. Coulter's comments. I think you made a decision earlier tonight about Mr. Gito's. Yep, Article 45 comes off.
45 was removed.
So we had 45, 52. What were the other article numbers?
The other ones are not in there. Yep. So 45 and 52. Yep. The other ones were purged before you came to this meeting. They didn't, they didn't make the warrant. Yep.
Anything else you would like to say on this, Mr. Tisdale? Other than anything else?
No. As Mr. Gito just stated, once you vote to not insert those articles, we will renumber accordingly. So it looks like if you chose to insert Articles 1 through 44, those would stay the same. And then 45 on would, would change by one.
Okay. Motion to, Vice Chair, Kavy, did you want to?
Yeah, if, if there's, I'll just give everybody a moment. Are there any other articles that anybody would like to see removed and would like to make a motion to have them removed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
No further removals or additions. I just want to make one comment if I may, because I think we've, we've perhaps underappreciated the work that's been done here. Not you, but the community. Mark and Brian, after the special town meeting, agreed to step up and implement a program developed by Steve Kavy. And, and so nothing, we've got one budget, we've got one warrant. There's not more than one floating around as has in the past. And due to Mark's leadership and, and Brian's valuable input, this is probably, I'm not even going to say probably, this is absolutely the most comprehensive warrant I have ever seen in my 13, 15 years in public service. Nobody can change anything without going through Mark and Brian's got the only password. So it, it has worked out so beautifully and I want to thank both of them.
That's great. That's great to hear.
I want to thank both of them for their enormous contributions. And I'd like to really, genuinely thank Steve for his leadership on this. He set up a calendar and a schedule. We're following it and, and they're following it. And because of that, I think even the finance committee is going to tell you, it'll be the most comprehensive document they've seen in a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Mr. Carrera, you had a comment? Just one second, everyone.
Do I have to make a comment while you're looking?
What's that?
Do I have to make a comment while you're, perfect. Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair, Kavy?
Thanks. We, so I, I've been speaking with members of the finance committee for a little while now as, as we've gone through a couple of these. And they shared their frustrations in some areas of, of this process. And they, you know, they're, many of them are good friends, neighbors. And so they, they certainly felt comfortable sharing their frustrations in the most vivid way possible in some cases. It was, it was actually really helpful input. And, and so I, I, but I took it back. And I think that, working with, with right now Von Anokian of, of the finance committee, we have constantly gone back, Mark and I have gone back and asked about pain points. What, you know, what, what are the things that are bothering you, making your life hard? And we've sort of one by one tried to cross them off. And every, after each cycle, we ask the same questions. And from our last, so very recently, I spoke with the chair of the finance committee, Von Anokian, and I asked, you know, tell me, are there any more pain points, the things that are kind of, you know, that you'd like to see fixed? And this is only a couple of weeks ago. And he mentioned that the motions come in close to when they need to publish the book. And they asked if, if that was something that we could address. So I brought that to Mark and to Brian Winter, and they said, oh, we've already fixed, fixed that. Yeah, way, way ahead of you. So, so they had also heard the same, same complaints. And the, I think the, the takeaway for me was that, that I think that the, the spirit of constant improvement is, is really strong with our team. And I think, you know, always reexamining, saying, what can we do better? What can we do better? Is, fits so naturally into Mark's disposition and his leadership style that I think that, I think we're extremely good hands. And I just have to express my, my own gratitude for the amount of additional work that you've taken on, the ownership for this, before I think just nobody would take control of it. And everyone, you know, was bothered by the fact that it, things weren't working out. But there was no, there really was no strong leadership in how to, how exactly to make this process roll. And we needed that to come really from Town Hall. And you've just taken the bull by the horns. And so this, this would not work without your leadership. So I really wanted to express my gratitude for that.
All right. So now it's the board's leadership that closed this warrant.
So we want to insert the warrant?
I was buying a little time for this guy, so.
We want to insert it first, a vote to insert?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, was there anything that you wanted to?
Madam Chairman, I have a couple items that, on, on a couple of articles that, that need some removals and, and I have questions on another one.
Okay. What numbers, please?
Is that the proper time now?
Yes.
All right. Page 24, which is Cedar Hill, and you got Item 1, which is a cot in equipment storage building. I would have liked to have known where we think we're going to put this. Is it going to affect, they having trouble with the septic down there? And is it going to hold till we can get storage down there? Or do we, are we going to end up pumping it up to the subdivision up above that was planned before so that it can operate? And I, I don't, I don't see the need of putting up a, a building right now down there without knowing where it's going to go, how it's going to go. And a multi-purpose mower with attachments for $55,000. We just spent $200 and something thousand. It was my last year on the, on the finance committee that I asked for the cash so that they could buy it all. There's a rough mower in here. There's, there's, there's three different, four different kinds of mowers in here. I don't understand why we're asking for another brand new one. I think they can operate exactly with what they got. 2022 products. They're brand new. So I, I want to remove Item 3 and Item 1. I know they need a, the greens roller and cost renovations is, is automatic. It's, it's needed every year. So you, you understand that. So that's what I would want to make a motion to take that out of this article.
I would like to discuss that a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a second to that motion? There's a motion to remove Items 1 and 3.
I will second it just for discussion purposes, please. Oh, Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah.
I saw Mr. Coulter's hand up also.
I, I would be honest with you, Item number 3, I, I don't know the details on that one. But Item number 1, I think you made a really good point. That facility is probably going to be in need of a septic system in the near future. It probably needs one now. Although I don't want to put it out there that we have a failing septic system. That's not the situation. But we do have a successful business in there for the last few years. We didn't have that for many years before that. So I bet the system's seen the most use it's ever seen. So it's probably on the end of its useful life. It was designed for a different, probably different use many years ago. Without knowing where that septic system would go, it probably makes sense to hold off on the cot in equipment storage building because you know how it all works, right? The, the best place for the septic system would, would be where the cot and the storage building would be. So I think Mr. Carr brought up a great point. We should probably think about the septic system first and then roll in the cot and equipment storage.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
With respect to the multi-purpose mower, we have no objection to striking that. I think that's a want and not necessarily a need at this point in time. But I do want to point out that the cot equipment storage shelter is in your description for 60. for $60,000, and perhaps I didn't inform Mark of this. I reduced that to 30 in your spreadsheet, and the reason I did was because of the septic system. As opposed to building a building, we're just going to buy one of those large four-season storage areas, tents. And the reason is, as you recall, in last year's budget, we're leasing 25 new cart paths, those are out in the weather year-round, and they will not live a useful life unless we get them under shelter. So we canned the building idea, because I don't want to lay a pad until we do the septic system. We've reduced the price in half from 60 to 30 so that we could take up and put, put up and take down that tent, but we do need to get them out of the weather. They're brand new, and they're going to age very quickly, they'll be fully depreciated before we finish making lease payments on them. So I hope Scott would accept that as an explanation.
Okay.
And we'll make the addendum, thank you, Scott, we'll make the change on Page 24 to show, to reflect that the price has dropped from 60 to 30, and that it's a removable four-seasons tent. Is that good?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're going to, you just modify the article just not to show it, right? You would just take that Item 1 and 3 right out.
No, we wanted to move forward.
Oh, you wanted to move forward.
At the $30,000 level to get those carts out from the weather.
Oh, I understand.
But we can take it down when you were going to do the septic system.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
So is there a substitute motion, a new motion to only remove Item Number 3?
A friendly amendment, maybe?
Three would be out and one would be reconfigured.
$30,000. Okay. And we concur.
So that's the friendly amendment?
Yep.
And I, my second stands. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No?
No, yeah, no.
I vote yes. So it's three. One, two, three. It passed. So that means Item, Article 27, Cedar Hill, capital, stands. Item Number 1 now says a removable storage tent for $30,000. Item Number 2, it's still 40. Item Number 3 was removed. Item Number 4, greens roller at 18,000, stands. That's the new language. Mr. Cora, you had another one?
My next, my next article is 27, hang on. Yeah, Page 27, Article 31. It's an appropriation of 67,000 for professional consulting service to provide drainage, parking. Is this, is this money just for the engineer?
Yeah. Yep.
Are we going to pave that dirty area? Or I would hope we would, because...
Yeah, so this article will be for fully the design, so right now, you know, the whole gravel area, that would get paved. According to stormwater management, it's actually a non-compliant parking spot, parking lot. Gravel parking lots that get that much usage are supposed to be paved, supposed to have catch basins that treat the oils and greases that fall off cars, that gets piped to typically some sort of basin or something else that again treats the stormwater before it goes in the pond. Right now, everything just goes right to the ground, right into your groundwater system with no treatment. If we put the money into the design, there's a very strong possibility that we get a grant like we did for the Gibbons School for the 319 Grant Program, and we can probably get at least half the construction funded through that 319 Grant Program. It's not guaranteed, but the first step is getting your design complete.
Chances are, if you're going to discharge into the pump pond, you'll need a VorTeq unit.
Possible, yeah, but it's going, I think we're going to probably have low-impact design features along the pond, something like a rain garden, along with a feature like you're referencing.
All right, thank you, that's all I needed was, there was no removal, I just needed information. Madam Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. So you just need a clarification, no removal. All righty. Anything else?
If there's...
For discussion.
No further changes to the warrant, I'd like to make a motion to insert Articles 1 through 26 into the warrant as written. Article 27 as amended to remove the multiple, multi-purpose mower and attachments for $55,000 to remove that, and to reduce the cart and equipment storage shelter to $30,000. Further, I move to insert Articles 28 through 44. And though they'll be renumbered, I'd like to, further move to insert Articles 46 through 51, but they will be renumbered 45 through 50. And finally, I move that we insert Articles 53 through 56, but they will be renumbered 52 through 55.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Yes, Attorney Winter.
I could just make a friendly request.
Formal motion to shut the, to close the warrant? Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Do you want a formal motion to close the warrant now?
Oh, let's hear Mr. Attorney Winter's first.
Just a friendly request, if you could authorize Town Council and the Town Manager's Office and staff to make any clerical changes, revisions, there are a couple of blanks and a few things that we'll need to correct before the final version is transmitted on Thursday to the Finance Committee. I just want to make it clear that if it's the board's wish, that we're authorized to make those clerical, housekeeping kind of changes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I move that the Town Council, Assistant Town Manager and Town Manager should be authorized to make clerical changes to the, to all warrant articles to help clarify their intent for town meeting.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So now, that's the insertion, and to close?
Motion to close the warrant as amended in what's Mr. Kavy's language.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Mr. Gito? Yes, certainly.
Is the backup material for these articles available for viewing online?
It will be Thursday.
Thank you. So that's all the pictures, the 40 pages that go to the Finance Committee on each article and so on and so forth.
There's at least 300 pages of backup information.
Thank you.
So.
And if there is no further business for the select board?
Yeah, just a couple of other things. This is just to make sure that everyone's aware of our statutory requirements here. So according to Charter, Town Charter, Section C7-1, we had to complete what we just did, which is close the warrant for the Select Board, but by February 8th, 2024, our Town Charter, section, actually bylaw, Section 47-2 requires us to transmit the full copy of the warrant articles to both the Rules Committee and to the Finance Committee. The specific language says that we have to do it two days, two working days after having voted to close the warrant. So I know everyone's aware of that, but I just want to make the public aware that our deadline is February 8th to transmit this warrant to Rules Committee and Finance Committee. And with that said out loud, the next statutory requirement is until April 22nd for us, which is when the distribution of the annual town meeting warrant takes place. But I just do want to wish all of the committees that are going to be reviewing this work, good luck, and also my gratitude for the work they're about to pick up. And I make a motion to adjourn. Yeah, that's the word when it comes to me.
Adjourn, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone, and see you next time. Bye-bye.